...our meeting tonight, please join me in saying the pledge.
[inaudible]
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You'll notice that Mr. De Giacomo couldn't be with us tonight, so just bear with me as I run the meeting and make lots of mistakes.
We'll be fine.
We'll be fine. Just to give a quick reminder, this is a smoke-free building, as all of our buildings, smoke-free in the building and on the ground, so no smoking. And if there should be an emergency, we will evacuate slowly and carefully and calmly through the many exits that we have to go through. Okay, we are going to go straight to the Board of Education meeting minutes approval. I know everybody received those. Do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes of September 11th, 2017?
Motion.
Xavier and...
I'll second it.
I think I got Xavier and Bill all in favor. All right, that's everybody. All right, we had a couple FYIs, the budget transfers, and also the FYI for the home tutoring services. Did you want to say anything about that?
That is actually there because it precedes one of the consent items down in the business agenda, that Western Suffolk Bosse's bid at the bottom. Good. What's happening here is rather than pay the home tutoring services, contracted services, the providers directly, we're going to use the Western Suffolk Bosse's service, which actually, same cost, but we take advantage of the aid back. So it's a cost-effective way of accomplishing the same thing.
So later on, we'll be voting to remove the RFP?
No, the RFP, there was nothing for you to approve there, but rather than awarding that request, we are instead going with the... One of the resolutions down at the bottom, the Western Suffolk Bosse's cooperative bid. So again, we'll end up with the same services, but paying less for it.
Okay.
Same contract service providers, et cetera.
All right, thank you very much. All right, and we have the warrants from 9/13/17. I need a motion to approve.
Motion.
Barry and a second, I see Christine, all in favor. That's everybody. All right, moving on to board member communications. We'll open it up to my fellow trustees. Anyone?
I have something. I think we all, almost, well, many of us, were last night at the high school for Meet the Teacher Night, Back to School Night, whatever we like to call it these days. And I thought, since I'm the newest freshman at the high school, my daughter is, I would say, since it was my first time during Meet the Teacher Night at the high school, I just wanted to note that what struck me the most was really how inviting all the teachers were. Like, I didn't know what to expect when I walked around, and I really felt like every single teacher I met, just like in all the other buildings that my kids have been at, but I guess I was more naive as to what was going to happen when we got to the high school. So I really felt like they were inviting and all about the kids, and it was a really good feeling when we left, so I just wanted to say that.
And ran very smoothly. And Mr. Detroit, Mr. Smith, Mr. Cusack, and all the other staff that was there were so helpful, and having the kids help us all find the classrooms, now we've been there a million times, still can't find the classrooms, but, so it was great.
And I particularly liked the song to invite us to leave at the end.
Yeah.
I actually really liked that song, so that was really cool. That was very clever.
I miss that there was a get-out song? Is that how it went? Get out, get out, it's time for you to go?
Yeah, that was a not-so-subtle hint.
Maybe next year. Anyone else have anything to add?
Two things. The wrestling room has been open now Tuesdays and Thursdays since the summer for open mats. Tuesdays and Thursdays, 6:30 to around 8:30, so any student, pretty much of any age, that wants to come out and wrestle, it's a great opportunity, a great way to get your conditioning going. Another thing, every year this board reevaluates its annual goals. We formulate district goals and decide on them with a commitment to excellence in education and an acute awareness of our responsibilities to this district. Personally, I always look forward to the end of the year when we assess our progress in relation to our stated goals. I'm exceptionally proud today, and of every member on this board, Mr. Polansky, and their collaboration in drafting District Goal Number Nine. Inasmuch as every goal is important and deserves equal attention, Board Goal Number Nine is close to my heart and important for many students and their families. I invite everyone to stay for our District Goal vote later tonight.
Thank you. Christine, did you have something more to say? Oh, okay, I thought maybe I saw... Yep.
I was just going to say, last Friday night, was it last Friday or a week ago Friday?
A week ago Friday.
Was the Town of Huntington Hispanic Heritage Celebration in honor of Hispanic Heritage Month, right? It's the whole month celebration. And I was there, and Xavier was there, and Jim was there. And it's a wonderful, wonderful way to celebrate and honor a very significant portion of our Huntington Town community. There were two community leaders honored, Veronica Melgar and Willie Perez, and several students, Latino students, from across all the eight school districts in the township of Huntington. And Monica Martinez, who is Suffolk County legislator over on the South Shore, was the keynote speaker. And if you haven't ever attended this event, I would strongly suggest that you do it because it's really a, it's an inviting and celebratory moment, and it reminds us that this town really is a multicultural fabric. It really is. And we are really, really proud of all the people in it, and I was thrilled to be there representing our school district. So it was a wonderful evening.
I just had a couple things to add. One, I wanted to give a shout-out to our marching band, because they've had two competitions and come in first place both times, so congratulations to them. I love our marching band. And then the other thing, just a little heads-up for any parents that might be in the audience, Finley's Meet the Teacher Night is tomorrow night, and Thursday night is the Senior Guidance Night, big night for senior parents to try and get everything that they need to know so they can get their kids into college. So if I have any senior parents in the audience, remember Thursday night's a big night. Okay, and I guess we're going to toss it to you, Mr. Superintendent.
Wait, I was just going to mention one thing.
Oh, sorry, Barry.
That's okay. Last Thursday, Emily and I, with Mrs. Acker, attended, Mrs. Acker down there, attended the school lunch program meeting. We had talked about this a couple of meetings back, about getting together with the lunch manager and the Whitsons group to just talk about what is and isn't going on in the cafeterias and the food program. And Emily and I have been involved over the course of a bunch of years at different times, talking about nutrition, meeting with the food service, and getting a sense of what we can do and what they provide to us. And I know there's a lot more, bigger things on the plate sometimes that seem to be going on, but when it comes down to it, with the kids being in the buildings and learning, you know, them being well-nourished and fed and being fed good food is, you know, is what makes, helps make them learn. So we, briefly, I'll just tell you a little bit about the meeting. I think it was last year or the year before, there was a survey that went out, and we kind of followed up about how that survey had gone, about the different preferences of foods at the different building levels. But Whitsons shared that they have a new survey that will be available for students and parents sometime in October, and that'll be available through a link that can be, we can probably place it on the website or download it, and Mrs. Acker is going to look into that. One of the things, Emily and I were prepared to go in there kind of saying, well, can we get this and can we get that? But before we could even ask for it, we were really just surprised at what they already had that we weren't even aware of, just in, you know, things that are done locally, purchased locally, the higher level of food items that are now being purchased, the higher quality, which was always in question over the past few years. So I think that our takeaway was really like, wow, there is a lot that's in the program that nobody really knows about, and we'd like to just let people know, let parents know, whether we put it on the website, whether we send information out somehow, just really what goes on and what's involved, and how much care and thought and preparation is for the, in the school lunch program. And I don't know, Emily, if you want to throw up on any of it.
Yeah, we're going to, it was a great meeting, and it was really collaborative, and we're going to work towards doing more to give parents access to the information that maybe they haven't really realized how to get to the information, right? So whether we design like a special corner on the website, sorry, Mr. Hoops, but we're going to throw that one at you, but something like that, or, but certain things that you might not know that are really important. For example, all the menus on the school district website are actually interactive PDFs, so when you click on a meal, you can find out the nutritional content of those foods. I think that that's a really important thing. We already are participating in farm-to-table initiatives, which I had no idea, which is kind of near and dear to my heart, so I was thrilled to find out that we're doing that whenever possible. And also, food allergies is a big, big, hot-button topic in school districts across the country, and what we learned is that information about a particular child's allergy can be put on their swipe card and linked, so that the food service workers will be alerted immediately to what that child's allergy is. And I was thrilled to know that we're doing that. I had just written an article over the summer, actually, about school districts that are taking a lot of steps to make sure that no life-threatening accidents happen in school districts, so I was thrilled to know we were doing the same. So we're also going to try to put together some flyers that will start getting out, just to make sure parents are informed. And I think that Barry, like she said, we walked away from this meeting really kind of feeling like we're a few steps ahead of where we thought we were, so that was good news. And it addresses Board Goal Number 12, which I've been bugging Mr. Polansky about for a long time, so that was really, we were good.
Thank you, Mrs. Acker, for putting it together for us, and they were great to talk to and very open.
Very collaborative. It was a great meeting, so I look forward to doing it again.
And I just had one other little shout-out.
Barry, can I just ask a question about that?
Sure.
So what was left on the table? Like, you were surprised about this, the things you mentioned, but what was still something that you were looking for? Was there anything?
So we're going to meet again, we're going to talk about doing a survey. I think that that's an important next step to find out.
And we're also going to, we had done this very briefly a couple of years ago, and we just weren't able to fit it into our schedules, but we're committed to doing it this year, starting in mid-November, is just getting into each of the buildings.
And eating.
And eating, and we're both good at that. And seeing what the kids like, how they react to things, seeing how the lunch lines move, because, you know, you get a lot of feedback from the kids, but you don't really know if that's the case. Like, my daughter will say, oh, I don't buy, because you just can't get through the line. And when you ask the question, it might not necessarily be the case. So just the little things of what, you know, what the kids like, what might help, and, just see what else there might be that we could do.
Great, thank you for doing that.
And the other thing I was just going to mention, our Booster Club fundraiser that is on Thursday night, October 19th, where we will be honoring Judge Jerry Asher, who's an alumni from Huntington for many years, and very supportive of the school district. He's really excited to be the honorary, and we're hoping to get a very good turnout. And we have a new raffle this year that we're doing that'll be there that night, but the nice thing is it's going all year long, and it's a 50-50 membership raffle, where it's a $100 ticket, but we're only selling 500 of them. So the grand prize is $20,000, then second prize is $3,500, and third prize is $1,500, if my math is all right. And so we'll be selling them throughout the year until they're basically sold out, but the drawing for it will be at the Senior Awards Dinner in June. So if anybody is interested in that, or anybody interested in attending the dinner, you can either go on the Booster Club website, you can contact me, you can contact Tim Pillion. That's it.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Polansky, you're up.
I'd also like to thank the two of you for engaging in the conversations. I will be watching for you cutting the line at any one of those buildings.
You know what happens when I get hungry?
Principals will be served notice. That's my concern. Children get hungry too, and they are entitled to eat first. I had the honor of attending the New York State Council of School Superintendent's Conference this past weekend, from Sunday actually through about midday today, concluding with the Commissioner speaking. Just a couple of quick takeaways. A lot of the workshops throughout the three-day event focused on student mental health and supports that you don't always first think about when you're talking about academic programs and buildings. The Commissioner concluded today, she focused on, obviously, the new Every Student Succeeds Act plan and the changes that are going to take place, potentially to accountability and assessments and evaluations, et cetera. And there's still a lot of questions to be answered, but she did attempt to address some of them today and make a plea for support from across the state, because obviously it works better when everybody's on the same page. Also, a lot of discussion about some regulatory actions that have been taken recently, some changes to standards. She highlighted the transition from the Common Core to the Next Generation Standards, ELA and MAF. There are differences, there are similarities. What she did highlight, focus on most specifically, is that the State Education Department is not going to make the same mistake again in terms of a rushed rollout, leading to all, many, or most of the issues that have taken place in school communities with respect to assessment and accountability. But she did touch upon the importance of educators across the state familiarizing themselves with the released assessment items, the 75% of the questions that have been released, and also becoming familiar with the standards, and using the next couple of years to learn and transition. The next set of assessments based on these new standards won't come into play until 2021. The old assessments, now two-day administrations instead of three, will be administered until that point. There was also a workshop I attended, or I should say an update that I attended, that addressed both sets of standards there, and also touched upon the new P-12 learning standards for the arts. Practical component is going to be certainly infused into the arts standards, and again, I don't have to say this, because everybody knows how important the arts are in Huntington, as they should be in any district, but there is 2017-18 set aside for a transition to the new standards, which again, is going to go beyond content and incorporate more of process and deeper thinking, but it will not change the essence of our programs, it'll only add to them. Certainly, that is our hope and our goal here. Other takeaways, just to cite a few that I think are prominent thoughts among educators these days, is that we're in a position right now in terms of our professional development here, and it's a focus across the state, where we're looking to increasingly engage both teachers and students in challenges that don't exist on course lists and syllabi, and they didn't exist on radar screens even a couple of years ago. We talk about the concept of civil discourse and media literacy and digital footprint. These are things that, when I started teaching, didn't even fall into the conversation. These are things that we all have to think about a lot more deeply today, probably more so than we did last year, and last year, the year before that. We're also looking at, and this was mentioned, at numerous workshops, learning and progress, student learning and progress along highly differentiated and increasingly individualized learning pathways based on interests, passions, and learning styles. And this has to fit into the concept of the Every Student Succeeds Act, and I know that's something that New York has attempted to focus on. Talked about the boundary between school and world, being smeared, for lack of a better term, and there's going to be a number of opportunities that develop at the primary and secondary, the primary, elementary, and secondary school levels, and also in post-secondary academia, that are trying to build back upon that experiential learning process. And another theme that has come up, and I've had the privilege of speaking to some of the new teachers about this, that powerful intrinsic motivations for learning, passion, interest, relevance, they may actually replace what we now know as, or could be, less effective extrinsic motivations, to help students understand the value of learning for learning's sake, and to make students really want to become lifelong learners. So these are just a couple of the tidbits that I pulled out, but these are things that we're certainly going to focus on here and across the state, across the country for years to come. That said, a couple of other items of note, of mention here, I do want to recognize, and this happened a couple of weeks back, we have a Long Island Arts Alliance Award of Merit winner, Thomas Edgar McNerney, and this is based on his digital artwork, so we'd like to congratulate him for his efforts. And we are also the proud home of a National Merit Scholarship semifinalist, Aiden Forbes, and my hope is Aiden Forbes will join us at the next board meeting, but I'd like to acknowledge him tonight as what... And we have a National Merit Commended student, Levi Leach. Congratulations, Levi. I know Emily, and Emily mentioned the Hispanic Heritage Night. Also that night, in addition to all of the other components of the evening, we had five students acknowledged and recognized for their tremendous accomplishments and achievements in Huntington, and I'd like to acknowledge them here this evening, Joelle Alfaro, Yadell Acevedo, Michelle Castillo Lopez, Brenda Vieira Pereira, and Emily Lopez. All five of them were honored. And just a huge reminder that homecoming, October 21st, we want this to be the homecoming of the ages. Every one of you in this room and 10 friends from each of you, either on the sidelines or part of a group that's marching, there is no excuse. Weekend wedding, family engagement, change the dates, homecoming October 21st. The parade starts at 11:30, followed by a varsity home contest on the turf thereafter. Please stick around for that. It's always great to support the boys and the groups on the field at halftime, so we look forward to seeing you there. Thank you.
One more thing that was forgotten is actually, I believe, this coming weekend is the home show for marching band, right here at Huntington High School.
Correct, Sunday. Sunday. Sunday at 2:00.
And let's say last, but certainly not least, it starts at noon, seven bands. This is in every, it's a tremendous amount of work that goes into the planning of this and the execution, the implementation of it. They do it every other year. As Jen mentioned, we have, the show that they're doing this year, our band, Americana, is terrific, and they're progressing. They were separated from the field this past weekend at Copag, eight points. That's a big gap at this stage in the competitive season. They have a chance this year, and not that they don't have a chance any year, they do, because they're a terrific group, but this year, I think the show is really something that is going to help them to shine even more. Home show starts at noon, seven bands, will be onstage, as will six other terrific bands. Please stick around. I'm going to say about three hours of performances. Thank you, Mr. Reynolds and Mrs. Ray.
And the truth is that we only get to host it every other year, but it's a really big fundraiser for the marching band parents, and as a former marching band parent, and hopefully a future, again, marching band parent, I happen to know firsthand that it requires a lot of money, those, there's a lot of expense that goes into running a marching band as big as ours, and this is really their chance to make a big, you know, portion of that money, so please, 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 come out and support our marching band.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, and that brings us to our first public commentary. I will just remind people in this room, you have three minutes. You can come to speak at the mic if you are a community member, a teacher, staff, student. I'll just remind you that we don't use any personal names of teachers or students at the mic. It's not a Q&amp;A session, so you can ask a question, somebody will get back to you later, but we won't be having a discussion. And we start with comments about the items for discussion, which are the tax levy, the reserve plan, the APPR hardship waiver, and our board goals, but if nobody wants to get up and speak about those things, and we still have time, then you can approach the mic and speak about other topics.
Well done.
Thank you. And now, nobody wants to come up.
Still well done.
Oh, wait, thank you, Tonyanne. Tonyanne, I thought you were going to step up as my former co-president, and, but no, there she goes.
I think you offended them.
I'm sorry, what did I say? All right, you know what, there'll be another chance at the end of the meeting if anybody thinks of anything they'd like to say. All right, and that brings us to the first item for discussion and action, which is the 2017-18 tax levy. Oh, except we have to make a motion, thank you. Are you giving a...
She's just going to put the PDF on the screen.
While we still have, yeah, while we still have more people on the other side of the desk or the table, can we invert the order and go from Board of Ed goals as number one?
I think we can. I think you can.
I'd like to make that motion, yes, I'll make that official motion.
I use the very official order, alphabetic, so we can, whatever you like.
Okay, so there's been a motion to move the board goals to the first item for discussion and action. Do we have a second motion? Does anyone second it?
Yeah.
All right, Bill's seconding it, all in favor? All right, we're going to move that ahead, then. We're going to move number four up.
Okay, so that said, we don't have the PDF of this set up tonight, because we had it up twice already, and the discussion, let me just get to my item here, which I cannot find.
You want this?
Yes, please, just open that up for me. One of the challenges, and I can certainly state that all of these goals are extremely important, but I think we've progressed from seven or eight now to 13, and because of the broad nature of school district operations, there's not one thing here that's not relevant. So it's hard to say, well, if you only wanted to narrow this down to six or seven, or five or six, as opposed to 13, it would be very difficult to determine which to pull, because they are all, they're multifaceted, and they address all aspects of school operations. So you've seen these before if you've been at prior meetings, and we did hold off on blanket approval at the last meeting, because there was one goal that we wanted to refine a little bit, and that, as a matter of fact, it was Board Goal Number Nine that addresses recruiting, hiring, and retention practices. Everything else is the same as it was at the September 11th meeting, and at this point, I'd like to present the full package for adoption.
All right, then. Okay, so it is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools at the Board of Education, review and adopt the attached goals for the 2017-2018 school year. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Barry, second, is Xavier, all those in favor?
Could we say something?
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd need a little clarification on number nine. Can Xavier read it for us?
I'll have something to say about it, and then I'll read it for you. Our district is a very diverse district. Over the years, we have seen an increase in the Latino population. Our district is increasing or coming close to 50%. Our Latino students and their families could greatly benefit from teacher and personnel diversity. Inasmuch as Goal Number Nine has been an unstated effort by our, Mr. Polansky and our administration, it is a great victory when we can formally recognize that a need for diversity in teachers and personnel exists. Many studies and publications have concluded that the diversity in teachers and personnel is vital for students of color, and today, our district will formally recognize that, hopefully. And then let me read the goal. So Goal Number Nine states that we will maintain successful recruiting, hiring, and retention practices supporting a highly qualified staff, upholding consideration towards its reflection of the district's culturally diverse population, that collectively helps students to reach their academic and personal potential.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments?
I just want to say something about the goals in general.
Sure.
It might be obvious, but I just want to say that the reason, you were just stating that we've gone from a certain smaller number to 13 now, and I think, just to make it clear, that it's because these goals are not goals that necessarily have an end to them. They're more open-ended and define a philosophy that's going forward. So it's not like we want to add a goal, so which goal can we see that we've finished or completed?
That we're even never going to put a checkmark next to them.
Right.
And there, as Xavier pointed out, some of these goals are, you know, these are things that we're going to put full faith and effort into anyway, but it does help for a community who looks at this, it will be posted annually on board docs, just to gain a sense of where our heads are at and what our focal points are within the district. And there are challenges that come with each one of these. One of our, just, you can look at any one of them and see where some of the challenges lie, but just to highlight Goal Number Nine, we have to make a concerted effort, I think, across the country to, whatever we can do as an individual school district and as part of a greater body of educators, encourage more kids to go into education. One of the things that we've discussed is that educators in general, the numbers are dwindling. There are 21,000 less teachers in New York State today than there were five years ago, and some certification areas, they're very difficult to find. Some positions are much more difficult to fill than others. And if you read what's out there right now, there are a lot of young people who are choosing not to go into education, and we all know in this room that it is, if not the, among the most noble professions that are out there, and you can make the greatest difference in any profession, becoming a teacher, becoming an educator in general, and this is just, you know, unfortunately, something that we have to, we have to work harder, we have to do a lot of good work, and this is something that also... and this is something that also came up at the state conference, to get these young people into the field of education. We can do it here, we have some things here in place already. We have kids working internships with our teachers. Can't be any better role models than that, but we've also got to help to influence our pre-service teaching programs at the college level around the state to help find ways to draw more kids in and kids from all backgrounds. And that's, that's, that's a tall order, but it has to be done.
All right.
Office of Box.
Okay, so did we?
Motion, second.
Motion, second, so all those in favor? All right, that's everyone, thank you. So we've adopted our Board of Education goals for 2017-2018.
Great job, guys.
I think so, too.
Thank you, thank you all, actually.
All right, so I guess we're going to go back up to item number one, which was the tax levy. You want me to read my thing, or you want to? Okay, so, oh, yeah, and then I'll move. Hold on, it is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education adopt the 2017-2018 tax levy in the amount of $104,814,107 before star reimbursement reduction and predicated on an estimated assessed valuation of $45,105,429. That would result in an estimated tax rate of 232, 38, figures I have trouble with a small number, per $100 assessed value. So I'm going to get a motion and a second, and then we'll see. Okay, so could I have a motion?
Motion.
All right, I've got Christine and Barry with a second. Okay. Is there anybody that has any questions, discussion?
Yeah, I think this is a.
Am I totally in the way?
I always like to.
Ah, you'll, okay, go for it. No, it's good. Sorry, go ahead, Bill.
No, no, go ahead, let Kathy do her thing and then.
I think she was going to put it up.
Just so everybody can see.
Nice job, Kathy.
Lovely.
So I like, I always like to remind people, Jen, that this is the meeting where we adopt the tax levy, as much as everyone feels all the great power when they go into the budget referendum to vote, that this is where we actually set the tax rate, the 760 tonight, elected board members, all right, because we are the legally responsible municipal body that sets that rate. And so it's important, I think, now that we review what we put up when we went in for the referendum and what we are ultimately going to adopt, again, for transparency purposes.
Good point, and just to point out here, the, the tax levy that the board has in front of them right now, the 104,814,107, that is the tax levy that was presented to the voters in, in May, and prior to that during the budget development process, really very little has changed here except for the assessed valuation. We did project, in order to project a tax rate, we have to estimate the district's assessed value, which is the combined value of all the properties in the district. We carried forward the 2016-17 assessed value in our projections at 45,081,357. Fortunately, through a number of steps, we ended up in September with the town assessor sending us a number of 45,105,429, which is slightly higher, and what that does with the same tax levy is it will reduce the tax rate by a, by a marginal amount. So we initially budgeted at 232.50, 232, 232.250 cents per 100 of assessed value. Because the assessed value went up in the entire district, we're now at 232.38. So at the same levy, taxes will be slightly lower. I think it's about $4.32 on an average assessed home, assessed at $3,600. Spend it wisely.
I was going to say, so don't spend it all, it was the second time I would say that, don't spend it all in one place. All right, so are there any other comments or questions about this?
Yeah, one, I just won, I just got to gloat a little. I was the one that said, don't worry, we're going to be all right on the tax levy, right? We're good, right?
I think it's in the minutes.
Last year dipped a little bit, which was the first year in a couple of years.
Right, yes, no way you could do it two years in a row. We're good.
You were right.
You know what, kiss your brain.
We learned that tonight.
We had a motion and a second, all those in favor? We got everyone. All right, thank you very much.
Really good.
Thank you. I've been waiting for this moment to.
The reserve plan?
Yes, the reserve plan, exactly, edge of my seat. Okay, so we're moving on to the 2017-2018 reserve plan, which has been updated.
Want a quick overview first?
Yeah, do it.
Not to go through, this is, this is updated as of, as of today, essentially. And we did a lot of work on the plan last year to get rid of some of the informational fat in there and get right to the point. This is something that every district should do and not every district does, and it's something that, that any auditor, whether it be ours or Tom DiNapoli, will look very favorably upon, the fact that we have this in place. I do want to point out that based on our 2016-17 end-of-year fund balance, you'll notice that just about, we're actually using more reserves than we're putting back in. All reserve balances are down, not, not remarkably and not in a manner that we don't think we can handle, but you'll notice that in each, in each case, reserve balances are down except for the 2013 and 2017 capital reserve. There is about a $300,000 increase in the 2013 capital reserve position and a $672,000 and change startup for the 2017 capital reserve. Those are the only two positions that would increase from 63016 to 63017. All other balances are down slightly or slightly more than slightly.
Right, which is what they want to see, which is what we're supposed to be.
Yeah, and we did not have a huge amount of fund balance to work with this year.
All right, then. It is upon.
Oh, I didn't also mention one other, one other that went up, the repair reserve, that went up 40,000. That's, that's not funded through fund balance, that's actually a budgeted allocation, and that money is there for a reason. I believe that was designated for the turf field repair.
Yeah, definitely.
But just understand that didn't, that extra 40,000 did not come from fund balance, that's from a budgeted allocation.
Right.
Okay, now I'm done.
Okay. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education adopt the attached reserve plan updated as of September 2017 based upon auditor confirmed fiscal year ending 63017 positions. Do I have a motion to accept? Christine, and a second.
Second.
Xavier, okay, motion and a second, any discussion or questions? All right, all those in favor? You've got everybody, but now, just so you know, Emily had to leave, so.
Oh, okay.
Still five.
Five-oh.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, I just wanted Joanne to know that Emily.
I should have mentioned this before, but just so you know, the last page where it shows unassigned and assigned fund balance, the unassigned fund balance is the 4%, which is legally permissible, and the assigned fund balance, the 1.4 million, is the lowest level in many years in the district, and that is also something that the auditors look, look at favorably.
Yeah. Okay, we are moving on to the APPR Independent EValuator Hardship Waiver. Rita first?
You may.
That is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education approve the submission of an undue burden Independent EValuator Hardship Waiver application to the State Education Department and authorize the Superintendent of Schools and the Board President to execute such application on behalf of the district. So can I get a motion to approve? Anyone?
I'll give it a go.
Okay, you know what, I got Barry and Christine as a second. Anybody have any questions, comments, discussion?
It's a rollover from 1617, again, for lack of a better description. Why we have to do this, if we don't do this, we are bound by the 80%, 20% breakdown, which the principal has 80% authority regarding setting the evaluation score at the end of the year, and the independent evaluator, which could be a district official, could be myself, it could be a director who's assigned to more than one building based on beds code, could only account for 20% of an evaluation. One of the things that drove us to put the waiver in place for the first eligible year last year was that if I have a building principal serving as an independent evaluator in another building, I have five buildings that would end up, for a period of time, whatever significant or insignificant it may be, they wouldn't have an administrator in the building or the administrator that's supposed to be there. And we also have 375 teachers in the district, so we need the flexibility. It was approved without any, any hesitation at the SED level, level last year. The same terms and conditions apply, and again, this will give us the flexibility to do what we need to do here for 1718. It has to be done annually.
Right.
Okay.
All right, I think we have a motion and a second, all those in favor? All right, thank you, that's five-oh. Barry, your hand was up?
Yep.
Super, okay. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you all.
All right, we are moving on to curriculum instruction. Ms. McCoy, where are you?
I'm here.
Here you are. I'm so excited about your new courses, by the way.
Oh, great.
I'm super excited about these new course proposals.
Great. I'll talk a little bit about them for each one before it's approved, so. First, for the CSE CPSC, it is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education approve CSE CPSC submissions as delineated.
All right, so we all have that. Can I get a motion to approve this CSE CPSC? Xavier, and a second, Bill? All right, any questions? All those in favor? Five-oh. All right, thank you very much.
So the first course proposal that I'd like to present is literary fantasy, and these were recommended through Subject Matter Council and EDC with Mr. Cusack and Mr. Levy at the helm. The first is literary fantasy, which is a grade 12 selective. The course focuses on a tradition of literature which includes literary fantasy or what is impossible. It will survey many of the subgenres that fall under the umbrella term literary fantasy, from medieval and epic fantasy to magical realism. By focusing on fantastic themes and writing about the impossible, authors attempt to define the real world and to understand their historical moment. Students will be responsible for completing a rigorous research-based project, which allows them to explore this complex genre on their own in order to demonstrate their learning. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools.
You know what, actually, I'm going to interrupt you, I think if you don't mind, also giving us a little rundown of the science fiction one, I think we can do them together since they're complementary courses.
Sure, okay. This course is a complement to literary fantasy. The science fiction course is also a grade, grade 12 selective, which will explore what could be possible, and students will gain an understanding of the historical and cultural implications of science fiction. It will survey many of the subgenres that fall under the umbrella term science fiction. Through science fiction, though science fiction was once primarily focused on science itself, the genre has evolved over the years to encompass various subgenres, including apocalyptic and post-apocalyptic speculative evolution and sociological science fiction. These courses sound very exciting, and I would like to be a 12th grader again to take them.
Me, too.
So this course will allow students to explore the sequence of events that can lead to ethical and social problems produced by technological developments. So it is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education, sorry, approve the proposed literary fantasy course and science fiction course starting in the 2018-19 school year, pending budgetary allowance and ample enrollment.
That's perfect, thank you very much. Okay, so can I get a motion to approve those courses? I've got Christine and a second from Bill. Do we have any questions or comments?
I had one question, just in both of them where it says, I mean, this just may be, you know, wording that typically has to go into it. Obviously, there's got to be enough sufficient enrollment, but it says ample funding must be available in 2018-19 budget. But looking at it, it's not a staffing, there's no additional staff.
We, we're expecting a senior class next year about the same size as the senior class this year, so there are, for those who know the high school curriculum, there are a number of half-year, and Ms. McCoy called them selectives as opposed to electives because these are required. This satisfies their senior English requirement. So we may have, and what has happened in the past, there are a number of different options for them, which is what makes Huntington what it is.
That's great.
And some may generate more enrollment than others, and what may happen, if you only have six students sign up for a particular course, they may not be able to take that course, it would be funneled into one of the other options or given other options. So it does, this would not necessarily change the total number of English electives offered, but it will.
Right, and understandable that there's got to be enough to, to.
Yeah, to make it.
Class, but as far as the, where it says ample funding, is, are these two particular classes.
They're not particularly expensive, they, we would need to buy materials for each student, which we would need to.
But it just said staffing wouldn't change.
Right, the staffing wouldn't change.
All right, I didn't know if there was something I was missing.
Is there somebody on staff already that is interested or, you know, has the capacity to teach this course, I'm assuming?
Yes.
All right, I will just say from a very personal level, and I usually don't say this, but I have a son who has a lifelong dream of wanting to be a writer, and his lifelong dream has been to be a writer in exactly this area. So while he's already at college, it thrills me that these are going into the course curriculum. We had a motion and a second, do we have any other comments or questions? All right, then, all those in favor? That's it, five-oh, that's terrific.
So next, we have the virtual enterprise course, and again, this came from high school Mr. Cusack, and it went through the Subject Matter Council and EDC. Just to give you a little bit of a highlight on this course, it is a simulated business that is set up and run by students to prepare them for working in a real business environment. Students will learn about economics, micro and macro, and its relationship to an impact on business operation in the private enterprise system. The students study supply and demand, the Federal Reserve system, taxation by local, state, and federal governments, business organizations, the stock market, and international transactions. The students determine the nature of their business, its products and services, its management and structure, and learn the daily operations of a business under the guidance of a consultant with the support of a real business partner. They use current business software packages and the internet for business transactions using economics as a factor. It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education approve the proposed virtual enterprise course starting in the 2018-19 school year, pending budgetary allowance and ample enrollment.
And I want to take this one.
Yeah, you're not kidding. All right, can I get a motion to approve this new course proposal for virtual enterprise? Xavier, second is Barry. Did anybody want to say anything or ask any questions?
I'm curious, what is the, the software that we're going to be using? Like, we're looking at maybe like QuickBooks or something like that? If you know.
Hold on, I have it on my sheet. Well, I have what it all includes, it's, it's access to the VE curriculum, which is a digital curriculum, I believe. It's dedicated, it has a dedicated set of classrooms, there's a dedicated classroom with sets of computers that we're going to be putting together to really simulate the environment, and I, I'm not sure if it's QuickBooks, actually.
Okay.
I don't believe so, I think it's a separate type of, of system.
That's great. It's life skills that we don't.
That's specific to the program, which requires the registration annually.
Are there prerequisites to the course?
The prerequisite, it's a grade 11 or grade 12 elective, and it's a full-year course.
All right, but no specific course?
You wouldn't have to take another business course prior to that, but it looks like demand is expected here, so we're limiting it to the 11th, 12th grade.
Right, right.
Would a class like this, it's an elective now, but based on, you know, just kind of keeping up with curriculum and, would it ever become a required course?
It could not in this department as of now, there is no business requirement, per se, and that's where this department, this particular course is running, but I will tell you, some of the things I identified before is the way education is changing, very specific to virtual reality and other ways to simulate real-world applications, this is, this is right there, and you want to talk about STEM, you want to talk about 21st century.
Yeah, I mean, talk about wanting our kids to be college and career.
Talk about career ready, yeah.
Course, so.
And we're partnering up with a biz, a local business, do you have somebody in mind already? I know it says that part of this is with the support of a real business partner.
Well, it's going to be, it's certainly going to be more than one opportunity that has to be provided, and depends on how many students are actually involved in this, but yeah, there will be, there will certainly be local partnerships.
It's great, I'm sure there are several Huntington businesses that would be interested in being involved. Thank you very much. Okay, so we had a motion and a sec. Oh, Bill?
Can you give a little description, just so we have a better, so what types of events or competitions might this group of students end up engaging in? Do you have any idea?
As far as competitions, I'm not aware, but I can look into it and get back to you on that.
There is. There are competitions locally that Chamber of Commerce sponsors, putting together product presentations. I don't know if there's any set competitions.
There is. There is.
Okay, you want to speak to that briefly?
Yeah, at JAB, it's usually each year, there's a national summit, which is a culminating event in New York City. Hundreds of kids go there, they bring to the floor their business and the trade floor at the, that's the biggest competition, and that's at the end of the year.
That's awesome.
Their business teachers, actually, and years, this is not, I have a friend who set up the, it was amazing, absolutely amazing, and these kids were selling, they were full-blown entrepreneurs, and it was, I was so.
It's great.
What about the?
It's great.
Thank you.
Seems like a great segue into internships for the community. We, in our office, we get interns from the law school, and a lot of times, the questions that they ask is, how do you run an office? How do you run a law office? Some things you just don't learn in college or law school, so it's great that we're teaching them these skills early on.
Yeah, practical learning.
And there are now post-secondary programs that are popping up all over the place to prey upon concepts of entrepreneurship and technological innovation, and I can speak to that as a parent, that these opportunities provide kids with things that they just, they can't get otherwise. To have this at the high school level, it's an exciting prospect.
It is exciting. All right, great. All right, any other trustees have anything to add?
I just wanted to touch on the neighborhood aides after, if you wanted me to do it now? You asked me to speak about the neighborhood aides.
We just have to vote on this first.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so we had a motion and a second, all in favor? I guess that's five of us, all right. Thank you.
Okay.
So did you, are we going to personnel?
Yeah, we'll go to personnel, and then she can speak to that.
All right, Barry. All right, so that's you.
Okay, hang on a second, all right, I am recommending that the Board of Education approve personnel items on schedules 5, 6, 8, 10, 11, 13, 15, 17, 20, and 22.
All right, did everybody get that? All right, can I get a motion to approve the personnel motion? Okay, I got Barry and Christina as a second. Any questions? All right, all those in favor? All right, five-oh. All right, and then we are going to business, Ms. Acker, I think. Oh, you're gonna go first?
Did you want, this may be a good segue into, I just wanted, we had talked about the neighborhood aides, which were approved at a prior meeting. Our second neighborhood aide started on September 18th, and I just thought that might.
Okay. So our two neighborhood aides began last Monday, and so far, they've sent out welcome emails to the building, where an administrator has actually introduced them to the staff via email to let them know that they're available to support, both at the elementary and the secondary level. They've already begun attending events, the first day that I met with them, they, you know, one of them called actually and said there was an event at one of the buildings, and can she go? And of course, so they've been attending events already, they've been doing outreach and calling parents to invite them to come up to events, to really just extend the, you know, the warm welcome to them. We're meeting bi-weekly, so that we can try and stay on the same page as far as the experiences that they're providing at both the elementary and the secondary level. Moving forward, we're going to be creating a brochure to send out to the community to let them know about the positions and what they're there for, and how they can be used as a resource. We're looking to build upon the original roles and responsibilities as they come up with ideas, and as we get feedback from our buildings, and build up the communication strategies to see how we can do better outreach as the year progresses. So all in all, we're off to a really good start, and we'll see how the position is transformed throughout the year.
Yeah. I'm curious, are they going to the meet-the-teacher nights?
We're, we can't divide them up evenly in every, for every building, but they're attending as many as they possibly can.
That's great, because it's a nice opportunity.
Yes.
And the idea of making those calls to kind of.
Encourage parents to attend.
Encourage to participate is really important, I think.
Yes.
Yeah, I think it's a really fantastic idea, hopefully it.
There's a nice article on the website last week introducing them, and kind of getting their names out there.
Which is good, and so people know that they're there as a resource, because they're not going to be any good to us if the parents and families don't know that they have, you know, them as a resource. So that's great, thank you for that summary.
Could we possibly consider maybe having them draft like a survey or something in the future, to see what some of the wants or needs are of the community, how to get some of the parents involved?
Sure.
And I think it's a great tool that we've added to our district, and it's all about just polishing these diamonds in our district, and we've got a lot of them.
One of the things we talked about is, because their, their schedule is flexible, so if we wanted them to do or design a parent workshop evening hours, they can come in a little bit later that day, and that can be part of their, you know, their general protocol and responsibility. So something like a survey would help us to identify need, but we do have that flexibility.
All right, thank you very much. I guess we're ready to move on to you, Ms. Acker.
Okay, it is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education approve items I through P on this evening's business agenda.
Very well articulated.
Yes, and so we have that in front of us, do I have a motion to approve the business items?
Motion.
Okay, I've got Xavier and Barry as a second. Any questions, comments? All right, then all those in favor? Very good, all in, thank you very much. Oh, there was a donation tonight, and usually I announce the donations, but I asked Barry to do it, because besides being a trustee on the Board of Education, Ms. Fears is also Booster Club board member, and the donation that we got from them is so generous and so wonderful, and I think that Barry could speak to it better than I could.
Thank you, Jenny. It's actually not just one donation, it's a compilation of donations that the Booster Club has made. It wasn't all just in one month, because if you look at it, you're like, oh my God, they have so much money. But it was over the course of, like, some of them have gone back a year and a half or so, but it's just, by the time they get to us as far as approval and all compiled, but, I mean, just quickly to name a few things, and certainly not limited to the donations from the Booster Club, a six-man mud sled for the football team, a lot of the work that you see, all the graphics that Mr.
Witcher.
Witcher has been doing, if you see, on the, as you come into the building, the security booth, on all the fields, can't miss him at the tennis courts.
Oh, no.
You know, all the, you know, the spirit of the Blue Devil work that he's done, fitness equipment for field hockey, folding practice goals, batting cage, indoor batting cages for baseball and softball, poleball hurdles, scoreboards, there's a lot of new scoreboards that you'll see around, either portable or permanent, tournament ball port for tennis, and even uniforms and warm-up suits for track and basketball. So I didn't even add it all up, but eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16. I don't know, say it again?
Five, six.
Wow. So a bunch of money.
55,000 dollars.
But again, over the course of time, but it just, again, all the money that Booster Club raises goes back right into the athletic department.
So don't forget to show up for the Booster Club event.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you so much to the Booster Club. All right, and that brings us to, I believe, well, look at that, we're back to public commentary. All right, got another shot at it, Mr. Graber, nothing?